This meeting of September 6th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business then is the order of business, and I do have some changes. First, under the consent agenda, we'll add an item F. And that's to approve an amendment to the city retirement savings plans. And it's actually a requirement by the IRS. And then at 5:30, we'll hear a presentation by Brett Ekstrom. And he's with the Lewis and Clark Regional Planning Council. Then, under 4A, the 2012 annual appropriations ordinance, Mrs. Johnson's going to make a presentation. It'll -- she'll highlight some of the changes from the initial budget that they presented to the commission at a special meeting that we held about two weeks ago or so. And she still has some last minute of work to do on the ordinance itself, so after her presentation, she's going to go and do that. And later on in the meeting, we will actually act on first reading of the budget ordinance. So those are the changes that I have. Are there any other changes? Hearing none. The chair would entertain a motion then to approve the order of business as per the changes that I outlined.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. For all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. So second item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not. Would there be a motion regarding the approval then of the consent agenda?
So move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll then move to tab four, and we'll hear Mrs. Johnson's presentation on the 2012 budget.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting the 2012 budget proposal, including highlights of the revenues, expenses, and capital items. We have added two funds this year. The Building Construction Fund to account for major building projects, including the Public Works Building and the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, which will begin construction in 2012, and a fire substation scheduled for construction in 2013. And we have added the Oil Impact Fund to account for revenues received from other governments for expenses related to oil impact. The revenues for our general fund, in our property taxes revenue, we have added $154,000 for new construction coming on the tax roll, but no increase for existing properties. It should be noted that there's somewhat of a lag between construction and addition to the tax roll. Only properties that were finished with construction by February 1st of 2011 are included as new revenue in 2012. We have added a new revenue line item in 2012 for crew camp permits for $44,000. Our administrative fees, which are charged to the enterprise funds to offset costs incurred by the general fund that also benefit those utilities, are calculated as a percentage of projected revenue. While the state allows this transfer to be as much as 20 percent, our transfer in 2012 is 8 percent, which is also a decrease from 2011. There's also a transfer of $1.5 million from the Oil Impact Fund for such things as the City Hall remodel and additional staff. In our sales tax funds, we are budgeting a 12 percent increase in 1 percent, half percent, and hospitality tax, and a 20 percent increase in the occupancy tax for 2012. This budget assumes a major change in the way the occupancy tax has been expended in the past. In 2012, occupancy tax will fund the CBB subsidy, the TR Symposium subsidy, and all payroll costs for the museum complex. In our enterprise funds, we are budgeting a 4 percent increase in revenues due to growth in both residential and commercial accounts. And our rate increases include a 4 percent increase in water consumption, a wastewater base rate increase to $5 for residential and $10 for commercial, and a 3 percent increase to residential refuse. The commercial refuse scale was reformulated, which translates to varying increases across the board from 3 to 13 percent. In our expenses, there is a 3 percent cost of living adjustment to the pay scale. We have also moved the step adjustments that non-exempt employees receive from their anniversary date to January 1st. Exempt employees are on a performance-based system with a 6 percent salary pool budgeted for 2012. The new staff positions include an HR coordinator, three police officers, and one part-time dispatcher, an engineering tech, an operator and a chief operator in our street department, an operator in the water wastewater fund, and one in our solid waste fund. There's also a planning consultant included in the museum budget in 2012 to help determine the future of the complex. As we grow, there's more and more pressure on our sales tax funds. In 2012, we will transfer $1 million from our half percent sales tax fund towards the construction of the Public Works Building and $1 million to the Development Impact Fee Program. Transfers from the new Oil Impact Fund include $1.5 million to the general fund, which is money we receive from our mining-related employment exceeding 7.5 percent, and $5 million to the wastewater treatment plant from the Oil Hub Cities grant. We are anticipating a 10 cent increase in water costs from Southwest Water Authority, and we're also estimating a significant increase in the number of solid waste containers we'll need to purchase due to the growth we are experiencing in both residential and commercial In our capital plan, the two biggest items in our capital plan in both dollars and size are the Public Works Building and the wastewater treatment plant. Both are expected to begin construction in 2012, but will not be completed in that year. This slide shows the funding sources to begin construction in 2012 and possible financing plans for both upon completion. 2012 includes $500,000 from the general fund and $1 million from the half percent sales tax fund for the Public Works Building, and $5 million from the Oil Impact Fund for the wastewater treatment plant. Our other capital items include the City Hall remodel, adding the animal shelter to the Public Works Building, patrol vehicles for the police department, replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment in the fire department, the comprehensive transportation plan, the landfill master plan, and several trucks. In total, our general fund budget has increased 15 percent over 2011, with 3 percent coming from additional staff requests, 5 and 1/2 percent from payroll changes, and 7 percent for capital requests. The budget for 2012 shows a $595,000 use of cash in the general fund due to a one-time transfer of $500,000 to the Public Works Building and the additional staff requests in several departments. The enterprise funds do not require a use of cash, as they are building cash reserves for large one-time capital costs that include the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and anticipated landfill upgrades when the master plan is complete. Those are some of the highlights for the 2012 budget. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. As we discussed at our special budget meeting, Commissioner Altman and myself met with Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Kessel, and kind of went through the budget again in more detail, and some of the changes that Mrs. Johnson's referring to actually came out of discussions in that meeting. For example, the budget they had presented to us assumed a 10 percent -- 10 percent of revenues from the enterprise funds flowing into the general fund. As we looked at that a little closer, and as Mrs. Johnson has mentioned, with the major projects on the horizon, we felt it was best to tone that down a little bit and try to build some cash reserves in those enterprise funds. Another change that I'm remembering, which I don't think made the highlights, is in the future fund, you know, we've been taking 5 percent of year-end revenues back into the general fund. Well, since we've had the future fund, I don't think it's ever earned 5 percent. I just looked at a report this morning where we're earning 3.9 percent. And so we're suggesting, and what's being carried in this budget, is a 4 percent contribution to the general fund. Those were a couple of the changes. Commissioner Altman, you probably remember more than I do in terms of what some of the other things we changed.
Well, I think the most important thing is that, you know, even just a year ago when I was running for office, at that point, we had $18 million worth of projects that we were looking at over a multi-year budget, and that's increased exponentially just in one year's time. And so I guess what I'm most pleased about with the 2012 budget is not only are we hitting the main infrastructure needs, but we're doing it in a way that we can finance it over the years, and if there's a pullback in the economy, that we're not left holding the bag on some of these major projects that we're going to need whether the oil boom continues or not. So it's a very sound budget, and I think that we're getting a lot of bang for our buck in the 2012-2013 year with everything that we have planned.
The -- I -- on your 2011 projected general fund cash balance, I think the number you're showing in here assumes that we would have the same cash carryover in -- for 2000 -- or beginning in 2012 with what the original 2011 budget would have ended at.
Correct.
Well, we're actually going to end with a cash balance that is stronger than 2011.
Correct.
And we were -- the day we met, we were just doing some rough calculations, but if -- correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think at that point, you were feeling that at this year-end, we're likely to have about $4.2 million in our general fund.
Correct.
Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so we felt that that general fund has been growing, that we could take a one-time hit of about a half million dollars and use that towards our Public Works Building. And that's mainly why you're showing such a significant use of cash right now. And that just brings that general fund balance back to where it was three or four years ago. So, do you --
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson.
Did I understand you correctly? Are we going to step through this in more detail later when Mrs. Johnson brings back? I've got a few questions here.
You should -- if you have questions, you should ask them now, because what she'll bring back is the actual ordinance itself, so.
Okay. You know, go ahead. I can wait till you're finished here if you've got more.
No, no, you go ahead. We're --
Well, let me find them here. Get myself organized here. There are a number of locations in the budget that we're talking about moving payroll to various places, occupancy tax. Can you explain that a little bit more?
That should be the only move for payroll. Originally, the entire museum budget would have been taken out of hospitality tax, but now we're changing the payroll section to take that out of occupancy tax. And so it shows up in a couple of places, because we noted that hospitality tax changed, and then we noted that it got added to the occupancy tax, which is also a transfer into the general fund. The museum complex is an expense of the general fund, so that hospitality and occupancy tax money is actually being transferred into the general fund. So you'll see the note there as well.
Okay. Okay, and then talk about the animal shelter. How are we going to -- how are we going to fund that?
In this budget, it is showing as an addition to the Public Works Building, but that portion is coming out of the 30 percent share of the 1 percent sales tax.
Okay. Let's see, you've answered some of my questions here. Bear with me here. As I looked at some of the revenue sources, the two sales taxes, hospitality, occupancy tax, I found myself wondering if we're not being pretty aggressive with our estimate of revenue from those sources. You know, I know they're all growing -- all four of them are growing leaps and bounds, but when I look at our revenue to date in all four, I find myself really wondering about it. I assume you guys must have looked at that pretty closely and dialed them back down as well.
We had your same sentiment. We thought that it was pretty optimistic, and we wanted to have as close to a balanced budget with realistic numbers. And I think that you'll find, based on the budget that we first worked on when all of us met at the library to this budget that's before you now, things were dialed back substantially.
The three combined must be 8 million? 8 or 9 million? Something like that? You know, if we're off by 5 percent, that's -- it's just a concern I have, looking at this.
Here, you know, we had quite a discussion on this. As Clayton said, the management was more aggressive in the numbers they presented to us at the special meeting. I actually came in just a little bit under where we're at now, but I think when we talked it through, we felt comfortable with these increases. You know, your sales tax, the 1 percent and the half percent are running about 35 percent increase through seven months. Now, it's -- I would expect that we're going to drop back down from that, but still be 25 percent up. So we're showing a slower increase right now at 12 percent, and maintaining fairly respectable cash balances in these accounts.
And that percent increase is based on our reforecast, correct?
Yes. That -- actually, that percent increase is even based upon my reforecast of Mrs. Johnson's reforecast, so.
It was reduced about three times from the original meeting that we had.
So, I mean, they are -- I mean, we're showing a lot of growth. There's -- Commissioner Jackson, you're right. That's a critical number on the sales tax side. On the occupancy tax rate or occupancy increase, that tax, through the first seven months, we're running -- we're up 85 percent. We have more motel rooms coming on, and we're showing just a 20 percent increase in 2012 over 2011. On the hospitality tax, that's running about at the same rate of increase as the regular one in 1 half percent sales tax. Again, that's in the mid 30s through seven months. We're dialed in here for a 12 percent increase 2012.
I guess the good thing about it is, is that we will know about the accuracy of the reforecast shortly, in three or four months here. And if that does come in according to our reforecast, then I would be a lot more comfortable with the increase. And we'd still have time to do something about it if we had to.
Sure.
With respect to the 1 percent, we haven't talked much about the 14 percent part of that Stark development. I know that if we make a change, we have to change contract as well. Personally, I just wonder if we've talked about this enough. I don't know if we've talked Stark development formally about it. And I'm wondering if the budget shouldn't go through -- go forward the way it's been in the past, and then we can address it in the future. But we can talk about that as we go on here, too. We're transferring a million dollars to basically finance our impact fee program, correct?
Correct.
That's basically what we're doing?
Yes.
Are we then, as those specials, those impact fees are being repaid, is that going back in the same account?
There was discussion about that would be -- in the future, that would be the plan as we -- right now, the money is basically coming back in and going back out into new projects. There will be -- there will come a time where we'll be able to refund this fund.
Aren't we going to need to see that we're paying ourselves back, so to speak?
Well, exactly. And I think that's the intent all along, but as Mrs. Johnson said, it's working just like a revolving fund right now. And as long as you have growing demand, there's more demand sooner for monies than there are monies available. That's why you need to add new money to the fund, because the fund is operating at a deficit right now. Soon as construction slows here, then the Development Impact Fund, instead of being in deficit, will go into a surplus. And once your -- once the commission is confident that indeed it is a surplus, then you can transfer that surplus back to, in this case, the half-cent sales tax fund where the seed money came from. But when you have a construction economy that continues to escalate, they're using more funds than they're generating at this point in special assessments.
I understand the reason to do it. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we've got the bookkeeping follow-up to make sure this money does get back to the hospitality tax. And I think we've also got the future fund involved, correct?
Yeah. It's from the half-cent sales tax. We haven't transferred any money from the future fund. I think if the rate of development, say, accelerated well beyond where it's at today, then I think you would have to either look at, you know, bonding some -- you know, doing some bonding to finance that fund, or you could borrow from the future fund to do it. But I'm not sure I remember the number now, but it seems to me that through the July statements that we had a negative balance in there of somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000.
I believe it was $131,000.
$131,000, okay. So, you know, we're doing pretty good, but we have made a lot of commitments that as these developers now actually push forward, I think you're going to see more requests now for that funding.
BAC pledge for 2012 will come from the hospitality tax. Is that what I'm understanding?
The bulk of it, there'd be a million dollars from the hospitality tax and $50,000
Community center and sales tax bond, this is our final year now, correct?
Correct.
Well, he's looking for that. On the -- you know, you set up a fund to handle the payment of the bond, where you take monies in from pledges and monies from the half-cent sales tax, and then the money that goes out is the bond payment, and then you maintain a cash balance. I noticed, if I read this right, that you have a cash balance, projected cash balance in that fund of about $56,000. If we're coming to the end of paying off the bond, why would we need a cash balance in there?
That balance is showing -- we're making the assumption we'll receive all of those pledge payments. So I'm leaving the cash balance there right now in case that doesn't happen, but any balance would then be transferred over to the half-cent sales tax.
Would be transferred back to the half-cent sales tax.
Back to you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Are there other questions by commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Frenzel?
In light of one of the things that Gene touched upon, and that's the 1 percent sales tax, the allocation of the 20 percent that goes to jobs development, I'm going to propose that on page 42, that that entire section be left out, the 450, the 271, and 721 down below, so that stays the same. My concern is, I don't believe there have been any discussions with Stark about the use of this money. And I also -- if it did get set up, we haven't had any discussions about the utilization of the money that's being kept in this reserve account. And both those things are things that I think are important. I believe that Stark would be open to discussions about the use of some of those funds or where it goes and how it's handled. You know, I have two things coming to mind this year. One is $430,000 payment that went to city infrastructure. Another one is $250,000 that went to the airport, or is going to go to the airport. Those are the kinds of things that couldn't happen if we didn't have the revenue. And we're suggesting -- and the city won't have the revenue to do that kind of thing either. So I'm not sure that enough discussion was had with all of the participants in the fund. And we can certainly have them between now and the end of the year, and if it turns out that something has changed, we can always go back and change the budget. That's not the end of the world. But that's my -- going to be my suggestion is that those three line items be omitted from the budget, and we leave it as it is currently until the discussions are had.
Right now, Stark -- the budget is carrying just a lump sum to Stark Development Corporation of $450,000 with the balance remaining with the city. I would certainly welcome the discussion. I mean, we did have some discussion of this at our meeting in the library, not in great detail, but we did have some discussion there. We've had previous discussions in prior years about this particular practice. And so I think it'd be good if we could have the discussion between now and the second reading and try to resolve this. I think there is a difference of opinion on the commission on how this should be handled.
I can show that 20 percent is just one line item, just the $721,000 total, if we want to show it that way at this point.
And that's the full 20 percent?
Right. And not show -- just show it as job development programs and not actually list anything else.
I think what Commissioner Frenzel is getting at is he'd just like to see it shown as a 14 percent.
Right.
As has been our practice in the past. And I don't have a problem with that for first reading.
It's not going to change the budget, because the amount's going to remain constant. It's just how it is givied up.
721, we'll stay there, yes.
Yeah, it's just how it's givied up.
And it doesn't change whether or not the projects you mentioned get funded. It may change who is actually designed.
The projects I mentioned, they're -- the funding is already set aside.
Set aside.
But I'm talking about in the future.
I -- yes, I understand.
I'm not sure that we've had enough discussion. And when I say we haven't, I don't mean this commission. I mean, we had to have some discussion with the people who have been responsible for the finisher of the funds.
Right, okay.
All along. And that's -- I don't think that's taking place.
I would like to see some of the discussion put in sort of a memorandum of understanding that between Stark Development and us, as to the use of the --
that between Stark Development and us, as to the use of the excess fund, should they need some additional carry-on some projects, or if we need to keep it for some of our, our projects that we have coming up. I, I think we need at least that type of understanding with, with Stark Development. I'd like to see some more talk on that point.
But for a starting point, if, if you want to show it the way that it has been done in the past, the full 14% going that way, I'm okay with doing that. But, you know, we're, we're going to have a good discussion, I know, here in, during our next couple of meetings on that topic. Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, you have an established finance committee. Is that the committee that maybe should be used to discuss further with Stark Development this very issue?
Well, your established committee that you're referring to was, in my view, an ad hoc committee that, you know, Matten did what it was supposed to do. I don't, we don't have a permanent standing finance committee for issues like that. So I think that maybe would be best handled just right here with all five commissioners.
Thank you.
The second reading will occur when?
First meeting in October.
Yeah.
And in between the meetings, we have...
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
Yeah.
Senior moment there, Austin. So...
That'd be good.
Okay. But if, if, I don't know if you, I know you've got some tweaks to the, the ordinance that you're going to bring back later in the meeting. Can you tweak the ordinance further just to show?
The ordinance actually doesn't break down the...
It doesn't break that down, does it?
No, it just shows sales tax in total.
Okay. So we'll just note that that's a non-resolved issue then. Is there anything else on the budget that you want to ask Mrs. Johnson about or comment on? There were a couple of other things, you know. They had showed a larger increase in property tax, and once they took a closer look at what was coming on the rolls, that number came back down. They had quite a bit more revenue originally from crew camps. We thought, to be more conservative, we, we scaled that back down. And then, as we discovered when we were meeting at the library, that Mrs. Johnson had held $500,000 back in the Oil Impact Fund, that transferred into the general fund. So in total, the numbers worked out pretty good, but I, I would say on the revenue side, there's a greater chance for improved revenues here than revenue shortfalls. So the fact that we have outside of the construction project for the Public Works Building, a modest use of cash, I, I wouldn't be surprised that by year end that there is no use of cash other than for the construction project. I think it's a conservative estimate on the general fund revenues. And, and just in case the people didn't pick up on it, along with the Public Works Building, we're, we're intending then to include the animal shelter, the city animal shelter, with that complex. It would be funded differently, but if we go ahead then and build the Public Works Building, we would also be constructing the, the animal shelter.
Mr. President, you know, it sounds like you guys have really second-guessed yourselves on these revenue projections, so, you know, that's great.
Okay. I know we have some timetables, and at 5:00, we have a presentation by Kim Nunnberg regarding the Western North Dakota Regional Sustainability Consortium. Mr. Kessel, is there anything else you want to say by way of introduction?
I'll just add that Ms. Nunnberg is the auditor in Beach, and this is a, essentially a planning grant that they are advocating for Western North Dakota.
Well, welcome to Dickinson.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity and time to present our plan to you. And as Mr. Kessel had said, this evening, I'm representing Southwest REAP as their chairman. For those who aren't familiar with Southwest REAP, it stands for Southwest Rural Economic Area Partnership. Southwest REAP was designated in 1995, and over the years, we have had a mission of alleviating outmigration, as well as creating and sustaining jobs in our eight counties. And I think we have done a job, a very good job at that. Our mission has somehow, in a, in a way, changed because of the impacts of the oil activity that is happening. And we have found at this time, Southwest REAP has a very unique opportunity to apply for a HUD grant. It's a regional sustainable planning grant, which we would like to take advantage of. And we have incorporated the 19 counties. I believe you all have the information, the handout that was sent ahead of time. There's a map included in there to show the 19 counties that are, that are on board to apply for the Sustainable Regional Planning Grant. And part of our, part of our process in going through the, the grant is, we're asking all the cities within those counties, as well as the counties, to sign on to what's called a memorandum of understanding. We want to go in with one unified grant that will address issues such as housing, transportation, education, workforce. And we feel that Southwest REAP has a very, very good chance of being a recipient to this grant, but we do need your support and are asking you to sign on, onto the memorandum of understanding. If you have any questions, I would certainly be glad to answer them. And I also have with tonight Shirley Brentrip, who is our executive director, so...
Ms. Nunnberg, you know, a city like Dickinson, we're, we have, we're large enough that we can employ our, our own planner, and we can kind of plan our own, own thing around here, but for our smaller communities, you don't have that luxury, do you?
You're absolutely right, Mayor.
Right. And, and so it's important to, the smaller political subdivisions, be it a county or school district or a city, that in this impact area, that they get assistance in developing a comprehensive plan.
Correct.
And wouldn't you say it's important, too, that Dickinson, even though we may have our own planning staff, since we play a major role in the region, and, and we're impacted also by how Beach and, and other communities in this impact area are impacted by oil, that it's important that we take part in this?
You're absolutely right, and, and therefore, again, we would ask you to be a partner with us in this planning process. I just have to side-comment here. Our city planner, Mr. Corthen, was so kind to come to a meeting earlier in the month that was addressing this very issue of the planning grant, and he gave an excellent presentation about the city of Dickinson and, and what they're doing to, to, to handle the, the infrastructure needs that you're seeing and the impact that you're having here. He was very resourceful to us that day, and, and again, we in the smaller communities, we really do need to be able to reach out to the, the larger communities and, and access those resources, and, and, yes, I think it's very important.
President Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Nunnberg, can you talk about any financial commitments and how any matched dollars have been dealt with in terms of this grant?
I can address those, and I may rely on some help here from Shirley as well. But on page three of the handout that was sent to you, you can see that the HUD grant is a $1.5 million grant. There has been a designation of $300,000 that has been committed from the Oil Impact Fund. That can only be used for impact planning. And then the, the local in-kind contributions, we have an estimate of about $200,000. Below that, you'll see our preliminary, and I ask that you keep in mind, it's very preliminary, until we actually get into the whole process of, you know, our administration costs, professional services, travel, and the such.
So again, Ms. Nunnberg, are you asking the city of Dickinson for any cash or simply in-kind support?
We, we are not here tonight to ask for any type of a cash or financial commitment. What we're asking for is, is for your support in, in terms of, of being a partner with Southwest REAP, so that we can, again, submit our grant showing a unified grant with all cities on board.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of the memorandum of understanding?
I do have the memorandum here, yes.
I suppose our city attorney should look at it, huh? Is, is that something that you're asking us to act on tonight, or can we act on that two weeks from now, or?
We would, you know, if, if you could act on it tonight, it would help us with our moving forward in processing. The grant is, is due, the final grant is due on the 28th of September. We have already submitted our pre-app, which was due on the 24th of August, and so we have a little bit of time, but...
How many more communities do you have left to sign on?
I believe there's just, from Stark County, it would be one, the city of Gladstone, yes. All others have signed on.
We can make the approval subject to staff review. If need be.
Were you making a motion on that?
If I'm in order.
You are.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson just moved a motion to approve subject to favorable staff review, and Commissioner Steiner seconded the motion.
There's a very many times someone comes to us and doesn't ask for money up here. He just asks for an understanding. I can handle that part.
Especially to secure almost $2 million, that's...
I suspect she might come back later and ask for a little...
I suspect you're right.
Well, again, I thank you for your time and, again, for your services in, in helping the smaller communities in, in Southwest REAP.
Well, we wish you well out in, in Beach. It looks like the oil development is moving your direction, both coming at you from the east and down from the, the north, so I'm, I suspect you're seeing and feeling some impacts there already.
Yes, we are. In fact, I get to go back to our city meeting and address some of them.
Okay.
Thank you again.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a 5:15 timetable agenda item, and that's the, here about the museum direction from our museum director, Dan Ingram, and welcome.
It's great to be here again. As you can see, I found my iron. The last time I was here, I, I had not yet found it, so it's good to be back and be iron. I'm here to give you the big picture, which is what I brought with me today as my show-and-tell. We're, I think, going to be doing some very exciting things over the next, next year at, at the museum complex, and one of them is to start producing our own in-house temporary exhibits. And our exhibit this fall will be entitled "Strike Up the Band: The Story of the Dickinson Community Band." And as you can see here, is the Dickinson City Band in Memorial Day, 1921. And before my arrival here, we only had one small image of this, which was seven inches tall by 40 inches long, and we were able to, using some of the money we had budgeted this year, buy a printer that allows us to do large-format photographic prints, and we also had bought a scanner and could scan the negative of this, which was also seven inches tall by 40 inches long, put it all together in Photoshop and create a photo banner that really, I think, gives you the big picture of the kinds of things that we can start doing at, at your museum. Because it's not my museum, I just work there. It belongs to you and to the community. And I think what I've learned since I've started in May is that there's lots of ways that we can work together with the various partners of the museum to create, I think, a unique venue for the people of Dickinson and for the traveling public. We've just come to the end of the sort of summer season here with, with Labor Day. I've gotten to see what that was like, and now I think it's time for us to also look at how the museum can function for the rest of the community, the other nine months of the year. And one of the ways we can do that is in doing temporary exhibits, like the one which will open shortly. What I've, I've done is begun my effort toward strategic planning, which is to sort of analyze the state of the museum as it is today. And we had some very basic needs that I tried to reflect in our budget for the coming fiscal year. One is that we need supplies and equipment to do things like the temporary exhibit. Some other issues that have been identified are, are just simple maintenance issues with both the museum building and with the Pioneer Park structures. So when I put together the request this year, I had very specific goals in mind about how we might move forward in addressing just simple sort of core museum housekeeping issues. And that's what was presented in the, in the budget that, that we sent to you. And why I'm here tonight is to tell you several things, and one of them is that I think I'd really love for you to reconsider the, the size of the budget that you're giving me. I realize we're getting a substantial increase over the previous year. I'm just here as a sort of Oliver Twistian person, asking for more, please. What I'd like to see us be able to do is to fund some exhibits and some collections management issues for the museum collections. We don't, for instance, currently have a stock of acid-free boxes, or acid-free tissues, or any of the sort of core elements that you would find in the supply closet of a museum. So that what I'd like, like for you to consider is, is just increasing slightly the budget as, as you will be doing the first read, I guess, tonight, and including in that our ability to do some things in-house that we've never been able to do before, like produce high-quality temporary exhibits. I think that the museum has tremendous potential for growing both an audience of tourists and of local people. And what I'd like to do over the next year is experiment with a variety of techniques to draw people to the museum. We want to start a program next year with an heirloom vegetable garden near the, the Pioneer Farmhouse on the property. I think that that's a tremendous opportunity for us to draw people who wouldn't necessarily see themselves as museum-goers, but would be interested in... see themselves as museum goers, but would be interested in the sort of gardening element of the interpretation. And we can start to begin to build new audiences. Because I think what we have to do is engage and re-engage the public of the city and the region in going to their museum. And so we've started this year doing some things that I think will help. We've begun, we acquired a scanner, and we've begun scanning photos from the photographic collections. We've begun working with exhibit planning. We've also started to sort of begin thinking about a longer-term exhibit that we could do on the history of Dickinson and do something along that line where you know that there is one high-quality exhibit at the museum all year round. And I think there's all sorts of topics that come to mind, oil being one of them. And so I'm excited about that. We also are looking forward in the next year to doing strategic planning. We asked for funding to do a strategic plan, and the museum center is probably, I think, one of your most unusual departments, in part because we have so many partners. There's the Board of the Yocum Museum, the Southwestern North Dakota Museum Foundation, there's the Stark County Historical Society, there's the Convention and Visitors Bureau, there are the ethnic groups who have structures in the park. There is a sort of Congress of People's Deputies involved in the museum. And I think it's going to be very important that we do a strategic plan in the coming year that brings all of these groups together, and we are all going to be in the same boat, rowing in the same direction. I think my impression is that we haven't always been that way. And I can tell you, in my four months there, I've gotten very positive feedback from all of the partners about wanting to come together again and to do the right thing and to move forward together. So I'm excited about the idea of doing the strategic plan. I don't think we should be doing a strategic plan and not doing the core functions, however, of the museum. So I would like to continue to be able to do exhibits and continue to be able to care for the collections and in addition to doing the planning. Because I think we don't stop filling potholes to do the comprehensive plan for the city. We continue the core functions of the city. We like to go forward with a planning effort and to come up with a plan. But in the end, we still have to go back and do the core functions. And there are certain core functions at the museum, like exhibits and the management of our collections, that I think we need to re-engage with and work in the coming year to do a variety of projects that are related, for instance, to the collection. We're in the process now of having to move the negatives which are stored beneath us here in the basement for the two large photographic collections we have back to the museum. I don't even have shelves to put them on. So I need the funding to be sure that I can do that. And those, I think, are some of our greatest resources. I spent the weekend looking at a portion of the photographic collection and got more and more excited about the kinds of images that are contained within that. And we have begun a process of systematically rehousing and inventorying those collections. And now we're going to start scanning them, so they'll be made more available. There's also a variety of things that we need to do in terms of bringing people and awareness to the museum and the museum complex. I think the photographic collections may be one of those ways that we can do that, not only including them on our website, but putting them together in small vignettes that can be shown on Channel 19. I think there's a variety of sort of inexpensive... Oh, my. The big picture has spoken. So with that, I will just sort of leave it there because I'm sure you have questions or statements or just a checkbook. We can take donations.
Ms. Commissioner Altman?
Yeah, I have a question. I had spoke to Chris at length before, for this meeting too, and I guess I would be interesting... One of the challenges I had thrown back at you is you looked at the budget that you had submitted to us for 2012. You looked at our recommendation. Show me your happy number in between and what it entails.
My happy number in between is $32,500.
Additional to the $205,000.
Exactly. Because with that, we will have the funding to buy the supplies and equipment we need for both exhibits and collections management. If you could throw a little bit more toward the maintenance budget, we could solve some of the problems with the buildings in Pioneer Park. But right now, I'm mostly concerned with recovering the money to do what I think will excite the community, and I'm hoping this commission in the coming year with the new exhibits and opportunities at the museum.
So your 2011 budget was $151,000, and so you're asking for an $80,500 increase from the previous year?
Yes. And that's just to bring us up to the core, you know, the core standards of being a museum and doing the functions that museums do and doing them the way... The problem with running museums is they're really expensive. We buy the most expensive boxes. We do everything with an eye toward perpetuity rather than the fiscal year. So by our nature, we're expensive.
Okay. Of your quarter of a million dollar budget, how much do you supplement what the city has given you, the quarter of a million that you're asking for with donations, fundraising, and grants to accomplish your mission as well?
We have applied, currently, we have applied for two grants with the State Historical Society that will be upcoming. One is for, we've received, we'll receive $1,500 to buy collections management supplies. We submitted another application for an exhibition, and that's $12,000, which we're hoping to match with $12,000 of supplies and equipment for next year. We should be hearing about that in the next couple of weeks. We're also, we also have the opportunity to apply before the end of this week for $10,000 to supplement the $20,000 that we've requested for the strategic plan. So there's the potential there of over $30,000. I've only been here for four months. I haven't figured it all out yet. But on the upside, I think there's some very positive things. I was looking through our negative collection and came across a collection of photographs from the Leach Oil Company from the 1950s and opened that up and looked at it. And there's Mr. Tom Leach and his wife Frances in the first oil boom in the 1950s. They also left their estate to something called the Leach Foundation, who we intend to apply to next year. We missed this year's deadline, which was the end of June. But we'll be applying to them for funding for exhibits or programming. Our programming efforts this summer with Art in the Park with the Children brought in about $1,500 that helped cover its expenses. We receive funding from the Southwestern North Dakota Museum Foundation, the Yocum Board, from the money that they have invested. So they've pledged $5,000 toward our photographic collection effort. So we're doing it in little bits, but I think there's tremendous potential for us to go out and get sponsorships and raise additional foundation money. It's a question of how comfortable the city commission is with me going out and selling the product of a quarter of a million dollar investment on your part to go to Community Bank for $1,000 or whatever I can get out of the local community to help underwrite some of the programs we're doing.
Because wouldn't you say, as a museum or as a museum in other communities, donations and fundraising are a big part of an overall...
They're a huge part of that, and we're going to address that in the strategic plan. The other effort, though, that you have to understand is that is often there are, you have a development director and you have grant writers and other staff. So we'll be back asking probably for more staff next year too. But I won't go there.
Okay. If we look back at your 2009, 10, and 11 budget, was that mainly the money you received or was there...
That, as I understand it, was mainly what was received and what was spent. And my question back to you was, were you happy with the results of that? What I'm saying is, give me the money to do what I do. If you don't like it, the door's right there and you can kick me out. But I can't be held responsible for what happened before me. I can't be held responsible for the fact that, you know, in my opinion, you should have been giving us the quarter million dollars in '08, '09, you know.
But you can see my point moving forward, that at some point, the museum's also going to need to be able to step up and take on a bigger portion of self-funding, either through revenues generated from sales, tours, et cetera, or soliciting donations to help offset costs as well.
Exactly. And this is a very unique situation. In fact, I've only found one other place where this is the sort of model for how a museum is constituted, where the city owns the buildings, but you work with nonprofits who own the collections. And the other one is in Greensboro, North Carolina. And they're looking for a director and an assistant director there. So I don't know whether it's a good model or a bad model.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
We're already looking at a budget that has use of cash. But as I look at the budget sheet for the museum center, it appears that in the 2011 budget, we're probably not on pace to reach the expenditures that are shown. And I have a hunch that has to do with transition, possibly. I wonder if there's room in the 2011 budget to do some of the things Mr. Ingram is talking about.
Can you address that, Mr. Kessel?
To a point, I can. Commissioner Jackson, there's been some expenditures made already. The very printer that created that big picture that he's referred to is one of those expenditures. And so we have allowed Mr. Ingram to do that, to sort of supplement this year's budget with items that weren't necessarily integrated into it at the beginning of the year.
For which I am grateful.
I should point out that in the 2012 budget request, the original request, there is $40,000 in one-time dollars that will not be there in 2013. And part of, the majority of that, $25,000 of that, is the strategic plan that he's referred to this evening.
So hitting on Commissioner Jackson's point, when you look at the 2011 budget, and I'm just looking at the figures that are in front of us, it doesn't look like it's getting all expended. Is that what you're seeing as well? So...
That's what it appears.
Oh, it will be.
Because looking at the first half of 2011 actual expenses, we're looking at $47,000 in expenses of a $151,000 budget. And so you would wonder if there was going to be money left over from what was allocated in 2011.
Commissioner Altman, Mr. Ingram does have the spending authority to continue to spend dollars in 2011 until he reaches that number. But as I said, we, because they don't necessarily line up, for instance, the savings may have been in payroll, not necessarily in equipment, we have allowed some flexibility with that. So if the commission is fine with continuing to allow that flexibility, there may be some of those items that could be purchased this year without extending those funds in 2012.
Right.
Because it is of a nature, the types of things he wants to purchase are things that will exist much, much beyond. It's the, like you mentioned, the perpetuity that they do purchase items. So there is potential that some of these things could be purchased in 2011 and yet used in 2012.
And that our budget comes out of the, except for payroll next year, it all comes out of the hospitality tax, doesn't it?
That is correct.
So the use of cash doesn't necessarily apply to that, or does it?
I wonder...
No, it doesn't. The use of cash that we referred to earlier in the meeting is from the general fund.
Okay.
The museum center historically has been funded by the hospitality tax. In 2012, the budget proposes to fund the upper half here, be the total wage and benefit cost, out of the occupancy tax. The items that would be below that line, you know, be it any of the operating costs besides the human being operating costs, would be funded from the hospitality tax. There is sufficient monies, I believe, in the hospitality tax fund to fund your requests. The money availability is not the issue. I think the issues that, at least I heard, and some of the issues that I have, that I heard from my fellow commissioners, were, one, we do want, we do recognize it's a unique model, okay? And that there's these different groups. But over the years, we've each heard the issues about the groups getting along. I think it's time that you get along, okay? Then there's the benefit. We're spending already a lot of money. You've proposed that we spend a lot more, quarter million dollars, probably a year. And so the issue then is, how is the community benefiting from this? How are we enhancing the quality of life, the quality of place here, that we can look our fellow citizens in the eye and say, you know, this is money well spent because this is what we're getting back for it? And I don't think we can have that unless all the groups there work well together and get along well. Now, Mr. Kessel and I took an hour and a half and went over and visited with you, and you took me around the museum and showed me some of the things you're starting to do and explained to me what you could do more of if we had had the supplies. Actually, you were making a believer out of me there. And I suggested then, and I think it's a worthwhile suggestion, I'd like to hold a special meeting over there with those five commissioners. Take about an hour, hour and a half, and let Mr. Ingram essentially do what he did with just the two of us, do it with everybody. Because then I think, I started to come away with saying, you know, there is value here. And this is something that can make our community better. But it's probably one of those things that you either have to do it well or you don't do it at all. There isn't maybe a lot of in-between here.
I think we've lived in the land of in-between for a while now. And I think, I like to think that I'm going to help you emerge from that. Because that's why I accepted this position. Because I think this is a unique challenge. And I think the, we have the opportunity with the strategic plan to bring everyone together. And that includes this commission as well. Because I'm expecting participation in the planning process from all of you as well.
But I, you know, how would you feel about, you know, I know you're all busy and the city asks a lot of time, or asks for lots of your time now, but to, we'd convene a special meeting there, and the only topic we'd have is the museum, and let Mr. Ingram and members of his various boards present to us and talk to us about the importance of the museum and how these monies can be used.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
I was asking the commissioner.
I know. But I just can't...
I have one question before we jump on that one. Mr. Kessel, and maybe Ms. Johnson would help with this. When we're looking at page 34 of the budget and we're looking at actual expenses on total wage and benefit costs, you know, as of the first half... you know, as of the first half of the year, we were at $32,000. We've got $117,000 budgeted. Because of the employment turnover and where we're at, do we know what kind of savings we're going to have on that? And if we're going with what Mr. Kessel said, that they had a budget of $151,000, and it's looking like there's going to be $30,000 in wages not allocated because of the turnover, do we know what that number is?
Commissioner Olmanz, I'm not sure. I guess I'd refer to Finance Director Johnson, because I'm not sure the expenses that have hit for the equipment that's been purchased already.
Right. What is the date of this, of your?
Through June.
Through June? Yeah, I don't think it has either.
But what about the wage side of life?
Actually, when we were in the budgeting process, Mr. Ingram had come to us with that same issue. And so, we figured the number to be around $17,000, I believe. And so, he's already planned to purchase things, including that printer, with that money. So we've done exactly that, figured out.
So you've spent your savings for this year.
He's already spent it, right.
Okay, that's what I needed to find out.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think it's a great idea if he comes and sits down with us and goes over the whole plan that you guys had available. I would, I wouldn't be a favor to him to spend some extra money now to get some good tape that'll hold that sign up over there. I think that's a, I'm not sure he didn't intentionally put it up with that stuff.
Oh, no, that came out of the museum supply closet. So it was like the one thing we had.
But I'm excited with what I'm hearing. That's why we brought you in. And I'm excited to see where you're going to go with this.
And if you make your meeting in the morning, we'll get you donuts and muffins. If you do it in the afternoon, we'll get you, you know.
You can't afford it, we'll bring our own.
Oh. I thought it was worth a shot. I'd even pay for it out of my own pocket. That's how much I believe.
That's why we have Commissioner Steiner. He'll bring them. But, okay, without any objection, then, Mr. Kessel, we'd ask you to schedule a special meeting. And like I said, I think about an hour and a half would do it. And so, you'll just need to get a hold of our calendars and see when we might be able to do this.
And you're done. And I'm done.
Yeah, soon.
I'm glad you brought the 1921 band. He's working on a, you know, the history of the Dickinson Mares. I would have not felt too good about things if that one would have fallen down.
I'm not sure you're not in the band, remember?
I'm not. I have no musical ability, but I did cheer him on in 1921. Okay, well, thank you for that presentation. And let's get to work on that special meeting then. We do have another timetable agenda item, that's at 5:30. And that's to hear a presentation by Brent Ekstrom, and he's from the Lewis and Clark Regional Planning Council out of Mandan. So, welcome to where the West really begins.
Good evening, thank you for having me. In September of 2010, the Congress passed the Small Business Credit Initiative Act of 2010, better known as the Obama stimulus package. As part of that, Title III of that is the State Small Business Credit Initiative. What that was, is Congress allocated $1.5 billion to the states for economic development for five different programs to help credit, to help small businesses get credit. The states were required to apply to the Congress to get those funds. Only two states didn't, North Dakota and Wyoming. All the other 48 states applied. We haven't figured out why they didn't apply, but they didn't. And Treasury still needs to allocate these funds out to these states. So what they did is they said, since the state didn't apply, municipalities can now apply for these funds, okay? North Dakota's share of that is $13.1 million. Now, what the Treasury said when they said that they would do that, they allow these municipalities to apply, they said, all the municipalities in the state can apply for it, but only three applications are going to get funded. So what they're trying to do is they're trying to get consortiums of cities together in order to apply for these, so that they don't, so they don't have to look at 200 different applications and try to figure out who to go through. Currently, there's only two applications that are being prepared that we're aware of. One is the City of Mandan is taking and doing the lead applicant with the Lewis and Clark Regional Development Council doing the administration. The other is Carrington is doing an application. It's called the Red River, I think it's the Red River Corridor. What we're looking at doing, and the City of Mandan is looking at doing, is getting co-applicants from all the different municipalities to co-apply for these funds. The reason being is, is that if a municipality does not either apply directly or join as a co-applicant, they're not eligible for these funds, okay? Whether it's ours, whether it's Carrington's, or whether a third one appears somewhere, if they're not on that application, they can't get these funds, okay? The nice thing about these funds is, there's no match requirement. We're not coming here asking you guys to contribute anything. You'll never have to contribute anything. And in fact, according to this plan, you could actually get paid, which, I'm not saying that it's going to be up to the committee that's formed, which will be representative of all the different cities that do apply. But what we're looking at doing tonight is to get, or to give you an overview of the program, what we're looking at doing, give you a chance to look at it. You don't have to make a decision tonight. There's an excellent website, the Treasury has a website that goes into all of this information of what the incentive, or what the initiatives are. We have a handout that tells what we're doing as far as our application. What we're looking at doing through the City of Mandan is we're looking at setting up a committee of, basically representative of every single municipality that co-appeals with this. From there, we will set up a subcommittee. That subcommittee will have anywhere from nine to 15 members, depending upon how many cities come on board with it. Any municipality with more than 10,000 people will automatically get a seat on there. They'll just appoint somebody to it. If the cities have less than 10,000, they'll be, they'll have to get together and vote probably three to four positions on there. It's open to any city across the state. So we're not limiting it just to the western part or just to the eastern part. Whoever applies is going to be eligible for these funds. When the Treasury allocates these funds, they're going to allocate these funds based on the population of that, of the application. So if the regional council through the City of Mandan's lead has 200,000 population from all the cities that co-apply, and the other fund has 100,000, we'll get 2/3 of that $13 million. And all the municipalities will have access to that. One of the things that this is going to do, there's going to be two different programs we're looking at. There were five that were available. But we met with the bankers, the lenders, and some economic developers to try to narrow it down to say, what's actually going to get used? One of the programs is a loan guarantee program. Well, Bank of North Dakota, SBA, USDA all have loan guarantee programs. They said it's useless, why do that? So we narrowed it down to two. One is the loan participation program, which will be basically subordinate debt to the lead lenders. It'll take, you know, that second position, but it'll be that gap financing. Lewis and Clark has been doing this since 1993. We're pretty experienced in it. We're handling about a $6 million portfolio right now, and all of it subordinate debt. I don't have a first position on anything. So I'm used to being in that position. The other thing that's new and that's not available, or at least from the public sector, from the private sector there is, but we're looking at doing venture capital. 25% of the money will be set aside for venture capital. There, and right now, there are some venture capital funds, and this fund can actually invest in those. But it can also invest directly into venture capital, into different projects that's not out there. So the rates and terms are going to be set by the committee that's going to be set up. Like I said, it's going to be representative of the different communities. And so, we're going to have much better rates and terms on that venture capital than if you go to a private venture capitalist. Couple of the key aspects too is, to keep in mind is, the regional council is just going to be the administrator. We're not going to be the, we're not going to make any decisions. The decisions are going to be made by the loan committee, which is going to be those members that are appointed by the different municipalities. The other thing is, we're a nonprofit, so we don't need to take out our profit margin on this. So basically, any money that is made above expenses is either going to do one of two things. It's either going to build that fund, and after these funds are defederalized, it's either going to build the fund or it's going to be allocated back out to the cities that are the applicants on this. And that's where the city could actually get paid if that committee so chooses to do that. As I said, all we're asking right now is, we're just asking for the city to review the proposal, what the City of Mandan has to offer, what the small business initiative is, what it's all about. And if they agree with it, just do, they just have to pass a motion as a co-applicant. There is no risk. The city holds no legal or financial responsibility. None of them do, not even the City of Mandan. This is a grant program. So we expect to have losses when you do venture capital. The cities aren't responsible for that. Basically, all the city's doing is say, yeah, we want to participate. And like I said, if they don't participate in an application, the only thing that you're out is you're not eligible for the funds. If you do participate and never use it, you're not out anything. What I've been telling all the cities, and I'll tell you the same thing, is whether you join our application, whether you join Carrington's application, just join an application. Just be a co-applicant on one of them. Because all you're doing is you're giving your businesses in your community access to capital that's currently not out there. Any questions?
Mr. Kessel.
President Johnson, Mr. Ekstrom, we have a lot of businesses that may not be located within our city limits, but yet are, we consider them City of Dickinson businesses. Are they eligible for this program?
It's one of the issues that came up when they went from the state program. If it would have been the state, it would have been fine across the board. Rural, or whether it's rural or urban, it wouldn't matter. The way that we are approaching this is it's going to be based on zip code. If their address is in your zip code, if their address is Dickinson, North Dakota, they'll be eligible for it. After 2016, that committee can go anywhere. They can go national, they can go international. But until that time, but like I said, that's a committee decision. That's how they want to handle those funds.
So this is essentially economic development money? That's really what it is?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it came out of the Obama stimulus package, is what it's better known as. But yeah, that's, it's grant funds. The $13 million is coming to the state of North Dakota. Whoever signs up on applications is going to get it. If they don't sign up, they're not. But $13 million is coming to the state.
Anybody have some questions? We'll probably ask Mr. Kessel or Mrs. Johnson to go through that website and learn a little more about this and brief us on it, but then we can act on it at the next meeting.
President Johnson, that'd be fine. We did provide you with some of the information. It was what we handed out. We did meet both Mr. Galen Baker from Stark Development and I met with Bruce today to further that along. We also participated in a conference call approximately a week or 10 days ago. And at this point, it seems like an excellent deal for the community. Haven't found any holes yet that I can speak to. But we'll certainly do that. We'll further our due diligence and make a recommendation at the next city commission meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we'll go back to 4A. We have the appropriations ordinance. And Mr. Crollin, do you have an ordinance number for this one?
Mr. President, this would be ordinance 1424.
1424. Okay, well, we would be considering first reading. I'm going to ask if there's anybody from the public that would wish to comment on this proposed ordinance. If so, just step to the podium at this time, state your name. We'll hear your comments. No one from the public wishes to comment. Mrs. Johnson, is there anything else you would like to say regarding the presentation?
I just wanted to point out, there are two possible changes that we know of at this point. In our general fund, there is a transfer to our retiree health insurance plan, which is basically an OPEB transfer. That number may change based on an actuary report that is being done before the next meeting. So at the public hearing, I'll be able to update you on that number. We expect that number to actually be reduced from what's in the budget. And then, the airport figures also need to be updated based on the information from them. I was unable to get ahold of him at the point of typing that information.
All right. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding the first reading?
I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 1424.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item B, the NDSU contract. Mr. Corton?
Mr. President, City Commission. If you recall, this agreement is a result of KLJ's removing NDSU as a subcontractor for the comprehensive and transportation plan and the city hiring him directly. The consultant service agreement in front of you tonight is an integral part of it and will augment it with your experience in projecting communities that are affected by the oil industry. This study is essential to the accurate population projections and the subsequent financial and social impacts as a result of these projections. Staff recommends approval of this agreement and is available if you have any questions.
Thank you for the introduction. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Is there a motion regarding this agreement?
Mr. President, I move we approve the agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Harry, now we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item C, which are a series of reports. And we'll begin with Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson and commissioners. Just wanted to mention, first of all, that there was a legislative briefing that was held here on August 16. It involved about almost three dozen people, either elected or appointed officials from various federal, state, and local agencies, including the county commission. We reviewed kind of an overall picture of the City of Dickinson, what our priorities are, where we think that we're going in the next few years. Obviously, energy impacts was a big part of that, and transportation funding ended up being a big portion of that as well. I believe we heard very positive feedback after the meeting and a lot of interest in what's going on in western North Dakota, and more specifically in Dickinson. Our hope is that we'll receive support down the road when we request funds or support for the funding, or for our impacts that will occur in the very near future. So I believe that was a very positive briefing, and I will conclude my report on that specifically. The next item then is a letter that's in your packets that we received from Francis Ziegler. He, of course, is the North Dakota DOT lead director. Mr. Ziegler could not attend a DOT meeting and tour that we provided about a month ago to the remainder of his staff. That tour went very well. As you can see by the letter itself that Mr. Ziegler has sent, it has actually resulted in them providing a million dollars to help us walk through the beginning stages of the proposed truck bypass. Those dollars would be assigned to completing the environmental aspects of the proposed bypass and is an excellent step forward in making sure that that project happens as soon as we can. That was our number one transportation project. And so, we're very excited for the allocation of dollars and the support that the DOT is providing us in that bypass. The next item is a city hall renovation.
Mr. Kessel? I have a question. In his letter, he mentions that a In his letter, he mentions that he suggests that a technical advisory committee be formed. Have you and Mr. Soren and Mr. Corton given thought to that committee yet?
We've not discussed the membership of that committee at this point, but it is something that we need to do in the very near future. The environmental aspects of this bypass can take up to 18 years to complete the necessary paperwork and studies, or, excuse me, 18 months. It seems like 18 years, trust me. 18 months to complete the process, so we need to initiate it as soon as possible.
Well, I agree. I mean, I think that's, as we all have said, that is our number-one project at this time regarding transportation, and so let's not give the North Dakota DOT any excuse not to keep their commitment here.
The next item, then, is the city hall remodel. Part of, well, the reason, of course, for the remodel is we are completely out of office space. We've actually renovated a conference room about a year to 18 months ago that now houses three staff members, two full-time, one part-time. And we have no ability to add phone lines, so as we add staff, we simply can't even provide them a phone. So, what you have before you and included in your packet is the potential renovation of the basement. This is one version of what it could look like. Would create at least eight different, or six different office spaces and a conference room, and then some workspace. This, again, is one version. Because we anticipate this project would cost more than $100,000, we'd have to engage an architect in this process. And because our phone system is antiquated, we are required to improve that. It's not being supported any longer, so if there is issues from a technical nature, we can't obtain people to work on it, or if they do need parts, they would be used parts from a different system that's been abandoned. So, that's obviously an issue for us. That would be a shared system between the Stark County Courthouse, the LEC, and then, of course, city hall. We all use the same backbone, so to speak, the same technology backbone. So, these dollars is, the bid that you see before us would be split. I believe the city of Dickinson's amount is about $97,000 of the $150,000. And that's based on the number of lines that are used by each agency. So, what we'd like to do is engage an architect to begin designing the city hall remodel and renovation, if you so approve, and we'll ask for that approval at the next commission meeting. Our funding stream that we'd like to use is the second installment of the 2011 half-million dollars that we received from the state in terms of oil or energy impact employment. Since we've surpassed the 7.5 percent of mining employment in the city of Dickinson, we did receive an unexpected half-million dollars yet this year. It's in the bank, so to speak. That would be our funding stream for this project. The next item, then, is a fire department substation. You've heard about this in the past. And what the land that has been identified, at least initially to be the best land for a substation to be built upon, is currently owned by the park district. What we'd like to do is engage the park district in a discussion that would be formalized in agreement, maybe a long-term lease of some kind, potentially even a joint powers agreement to place a fire substation upon that land. From what we understand, ownership is not available to us, but a long-term lease may be available. So, we'd like to engage the park board in discussions and formally make that request of, or let you know that that is our intent, is to discuss with them the use of their land for a fire department substation. It would be located on 21st Street, almost directly south of the apartment complex. Century Apartments.
Mr. Kessel, one of the things you need to talk about in that meeting, if that is dedicated parkland, because like I said, I don't think they can transfer it to anyone because it's dedicated. Just to make sure that we can do it where we're thinking with that land.
Commissioner Steiner, thank you. It is dedicated parkland, and they can't sell it. The preliminary discussions anyways have revealed that to us. What we don't know is if we do place a fire substation on that land, we might have to augment that with certain park features to make sure that it complies with the intent of the dedication originally. And so, that's kind of going to be part of the discussions, is what do we need to do in order to meet that intent?
Was that issue ever addressed at the state legislature this year about what the park did to dedicate it? I think they intended to, I just don't think it got on board yet, but I think that's something that they're going to want to talk about in two years.
How about the citizens that live in that area? Have we formally reached out to them and informed them of what our intent is?
We have not, President Johnson. I know that the park, I had a conversation, a meeting with the park director last week, and I know that they are having discussions with some of the adjacent landowners already, but that process has not been formalized at this point.
I think that, you know, that's something we can't overlook. We need to, before you get too far down on this process, that the citizens that live in that area need to know what the possible use of that land would be.
President Johnson, the other intent is to talk to the individual who deeded the land originally to the park and obtain approval for this kind of use as well. The next item, then, is the KLJ government liaison contract. You saw, or see a letter that was part of your packet that does inform them of our intent not to renew this government affairs contract in 2011, or, excuse me, in 2012. They did perform some nice services for the city of Dickinson. We, as you have passed first reading tonight, you understand that we are running a use of cash for 2012. We expect anyways a use of cash. We didn't feel that it was in our best interest, then, to maintain a contract, this is a, I think, a $40,000 contract, into the next year, especially in a non-legislative year, and a year where we'll have the comprehensive plan that we'll be working on. KLJ Government Affairs Unit will be consulted during that comprehensive planning process, so we will still gain some of their expertise in that process, but didn't feel as though renewing the contract with our current budget scenario is in our best interest. The next item, then, is a Title VI policy, and I would yield the floor to Attorney Coling to go over that policy. I will preface it by saying that Title VI, the reason that this policy was created was because of DOT funds that come from the federal government. The North Dakota DOT is asking that we become Title VI compliant, where in the past, the federal DOT accepted North Dakota DOT Title VI policy for compliance. They're no longer doing that, and they're requiring cities that accept those federal dollars to become Title VI compliant as well. So, Attorney Coling?
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Mr. Kessel noted, this policy is intended to state the city's policy with respect to Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. Title VI has to do with receipt of federal funds and making sure that those entities that receive federal funds do not discriminate on the basis of race or color or national origin. The majority of the policy is derived from a parallel policy that is adopted and enforced by the North Dakota Department of Transportation. And in accepting funding from the North Dakota Department of Transportation, the city has been complying with the requirements of Title VI in order to receive those funds. So, there will be no substantive change in what the city does or the manner in which the city awards contracts or comports with the city business. If you do have any questions, I can address those. Otherwise, the city staff would recommend approval.
So, you'd place this on next month or next meeting's agenda, and we'd act on it then?
That's correct, President Johnson. You don't have to act this evening. It's for your advisement. I will say that this policy, as it's been presented to you in draft format, has been approved by the Civil Service Commission and recommended for approval when this body takes action.
Can I ask one question, Mr. President?
Sure.
I'm reading item three, and that's pretty standard, you know, for a city or county or whomever to have to pass on these requirements. But the way it reads, it doesn't make any difference if there are federal funds or not. Is that what's required of us? Is that what we intend to do? In other words, we do local mill and overlay projects, and I know that we will, you know, have intentions to comply with the Civil Rights Act, but to have to do it in the regulatory manner that's going to be required through the DOT might not be something we want to do for local projects.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioner Jackson, the intent of this is to just apply to those projects that would receive federal funding. We can't make that change to make that clear in the subsequent draft of the resolution.
Would it not be true that we really would comply with the 1964 Civil Rights Act in projects that weren't funded by the federal government?
President Johnson, we feel as though we're in compliance today with Title VI. Our operation, we may have to do a little bit of data keeping that we're not doing today, but we are an equal opportunity employer, and, you know, there's, I'm not sure the legal reason for not stating the, or for stating that it should be just federal contracts, but I would say that we are in Title VI compliance today with all of our contracts.
Expect what's going to have to happen is we're going to have to pass this line, bidding documents, specifications, and whatnot. And I know we intend to do this. We intend to be in compliance, but you may not want to have the red tape with your non-federal projects.
If there's no further questions, the last item, then, on the reports list is a texting while driving ordinance, and I would also yield the floor to Attorney Coling to review this.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this proposed ordinance before you mirrors a similar ordinance that was passed in the last legislative session by the North Dakota Legislature. It prohibits the use of a wireless communication device for texting while driving. Does provide for a penalty, which would be a moving violation as well. This would, this ordinance would incorporate this into our city code so that it could be enforced by city police officers on city streets as well as otherwise outside of city limits. The proposed ordinance, as well as the legislation passed by the state legislature, also prohibits the use of an electronic communication device or a cellphone by anyone who is a minor. That's also, of course, only while driving. So, the ordinance mirrors the central law passed by the state legislature, and this is on for your report. The city staff would recommend approval.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Coling, on section 2336360, why do they say an individual at least 16 and under 18 when there's minors as young as 14 driving?
Mr. President, Commissioner Steiner, that is the way the state legislation reads, and we did not make any changes to it from what the state legislature had passed.
I think we need to take a look at that.
Any other questions or comments?
And you intend to bring this to us at the next meeting? Is that your intention right now? Are there, I'll ask the commission, is there anyone here who objects to this? Do you just soon not see it brought forth? Or do you encourage it?
Mr. President, you know, when I read it, I wonder about enforcement, but I guess that, we leave that to others, I suppose. I think Mr. Steiner makes a good point, though, with the age issue.
Isn't part of the reason the age is in there is that January 1st, the age requirement for driver's license changes to 16 in North Dakota, and this is for a Class D license, and so this is to mirror where the rules are going starting January 1st, that you won't have a 14-year-old with a Class D license moving forward.
So, in two years, everybody that's got a license at 14 would then come under the law, but until then, they can
Right, there'll be
Tech stuff, worrying about it. Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Okay, well, I didn't hear any objections to bringing it forward, so I think you can do that for first reading. Is there anything else that you have to report on?
That would conclude my report, President Johnson.
Okay. We'll move to tab five, public safety, and we'll hear a report on our risk management program. Chief Seavock?
President Johnson, Commissioners, tonight I have just some information for you on the city safety program administered by the fire department. We're comparing year end of 2010 to end of August 2011, and the information that you've got in front of you, unfortunately, I have to say, we have to add an incident to that from the time I submitted this report until the end of business today. So, incidents reported as of the end of today should be 34. Incidents requiring medical attention stays unchanged at 12. Incidents without medical attention gains one at 11. Property damage, 11, almost, well, actually more than double from last year, and the majority of those can be attributed to the type of weather conditions we had, and most of them happened during snow removal also. What's interesting to note, and what we're watching, is that we're already at 34 total incidents, and we're not at year end compared to 32 total incidents for 2010. We had a goal of reducing our incidents by 10 percent. Unfortunately, we not only lost that, we lost that early on, I'm afraid. Not all incidents requiring medical attention end up as workforce safety claims, however. That's based on workforce safety's review of what happened, and I know already in 2011, at least two of the medical incidents have been workforce safety claims that were denied. So, in looking at that, you can't assume that those are all workforce safety claims. It does show, though, that our employees are very busy, and they are getting injured, and I know that that's been talked about at other meetings at various times. Overworked staff and understaffed departments sometimes ends up with injured employees. I know that the commission is very aware of that, and that all departments are working to address those things. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions for the chief?
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll go to tab six, Public Works, and Mr. Corton, it looks like most of those are yours, so we'll just turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, City Commission. The first item is final plat for Diamond Acres subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval of this final plat. The property is located southerly of 21st Street East and westerly of 10th Avenue East. If you recall, a year or so ago, the applicant went through the approval process, received final plat approval for Diamond Acres. Since then, they have modified some of the lots and some of the roads, and primarily they have increased the lot sizes to the south of 21st Street East in order to accommodate commercial development. In the future, they will be providing a rezone application for some portions of the existing plat to go from residential the existing plat to go from residential to commercial. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions regarding this plat? What is the resolution number?
Mr. President, this will be Resolution 48-2011.
Okay. Is there a motion then regarding this resolution?
Mr. President, I'll move we approve the Diamond Acres subdivision, Resolution 48-2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the final plat for state seventh addition. This is a continuation of the ROARs development. In the last several months, you've had, you've had two final plats come your way, and this will be a continuation further to the north. Planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. The plat is located easterly of the Business Loop and southerly of Fairway Street. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Is this 49 then? Okay. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this plat? Will it be approved? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is final plat for state eighth addition. This is the continuation. It's further to the north. Planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Resolution 50? Okay. Any comments, questions here?
Mr. President, motion to approve Resolution 50?
Okay, we have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. Any discussion? We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is zoning text amendments. If you recall, this is the second reading of the zoning text amendment, so it was brought your way the last meeting. Staff proposed five amendments to the zoning code, and I'll briefly summarize those. There has been no changes to the first reading. I want to let you know that before. The First Amendment, or the first change, is a provision establishing a review and approval process for temporary use permits. This would be used to address temporary uses. Our current zoning code does not have a mechanism in order to provide conditions or to address that condition satisfactorily, and this will establish a new process. The Second Amendment will provide architects and builders with more flexibility to design buildings with more articulation and style. The Third Amendment is a provision that addresses nonconforming lot splits or unapproved lot splits, provides it through the special use process with certain criteria that would come in front of both the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately through you for approval. The Fourth Amendment clarifies the total allowance for detached buildings. There is some confusion. There's been different interpretations of the zoning code in the past, and this clarifies that issue. And the Last Amendment creates a architectural standard for detached buildings that are greater than 250 square feet, requires that those buildings would be consistent in exterior appearance of the primary structure. And this is mainly used in our residential districts in order to avoid the problem that we've had of agricultural buildings that are being placed in our residential districts, bringing down the value or not befitting of a residential district. And with that, I can answer any questions you may specifically have.
You've heard the introduction. Any comments or questions? Is there anyone from the public that would wish to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? If so, you can come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Is there a motion then regarding the second reading and final passage?
I'll move our approval.
We have the motion to approve, and we have the second. Any discussion? Hearing none then will vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to the inert landfill permit, and Mr. Soren, I think that's yours.
That one's mine. Thank you, President Johnson, City Commission. This is the permit application for our inert landfill, which is located southwest of town. It is the landfill that we used for most of the storm debris through the tornado damaged area. This is where we hauled most of that debris to. It's also used when the water treatment facility, their sludge ponds, need to be cleaned out. This is the location that that's been done in the past as well. We did have Wankin Associates help us with this as they're working on our master plan for our solid waste facilities and have helped us put this permit application together. We do have it in front of you tonight for approval, and once approved, we'll get it submitted to the Health Department for their review. In conjunction with this or the second phase to this, our permit is also up on our municipal solid waste facility, which is located southeast of town. That application will be coming in front of the board at the next meeting. They're finalizing some of the details of that. I just wanted to point out that we have been working on some issues out there and have all of those resolved at this point. So we are current with our permit. With that, if there's any questions about the inert permit itself, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Soren. Any questions here? There, would there be a motion regarding the approval then?
I'll move we approve the inert landfill permit application.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none then will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Soren?
Just to go back to the municipal solid waste facility, that permit application is due this month, as I mentioned, as well. We are working with Wank on getting that in line for your review, but we did have Schwartz Construction come in and do a lot of work for us to make sure we got in compliance on our stormwater, our daily cover issues that we had out there, and we've got that all under control at this point, and we shouldn't see any concerns from the Health Department at this point with the renewal of that permit. So I do want to commend Aaron and the staff out there and working with that contractor to get that resolved, those issues taken care of, once they're pointed out to us in a timely fashion.
Would you take a question on wastewater?
I will take a question on wastewater.
Okay. You know, through the first six months or so of this year, our average daily flows were up substantially over a year ago. I think, if I remember, it was close to 20%. But some of that was probably due to the amount of rain that we had. Since it's been a little drier here lately, have we seen those flows come down, or are they still continuing to run at that higher rate?
You know, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but the trend is typically they're coming down. I think we were at 2.3-plus early in the spring. I believe we're just over 2 million right now. 2.1 is kind of where that average has been coming down, so it is coming down, but it's not at the 1.8 that we were at.
No, it's still pretty high.
Still pretty high.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody else have questions for the city engineer or comments? All right, well, we'll move to item seven, and that is comments by city commissioners. Mr. Jackson, you indicated at the start of the meeting you'd, yeah?
I have one item. We've talked before at this meeting, planning and zoning, that as our community grows, that we have the northwest quadrant of town that, you know, really is pretty open. We're really fortunate as a community to be able to plan that quadrant of town really freely. We're going to have two projects coming up in the next, in the coming weeks here, I understand, that will really affect that northwest quadrant. Last week I had occasion, and I don't think he'd mind me attributing this to him, but I had occasion to be with Mr. Ziegler again, DOT Director, and he again went on and on about what a great job Dickinson is doing with planning and with handling the oil impact. He's just very impressed with what he saw when he was out here. I bring that up because we need to continue that as we look at projects, significant projects that are going to come in that northwest quadrant of town. One of the things that I'd like to see, and our staff doesn't have much to do with its time, but one of the things that I would really like to see is to get a good count of where we are with residential lots before we have to address these projects that are coming. We've got a lot of lots that are platted, many more that are already laid out. They probably will be platted shortly. I'd like to know how far we can grow, to what number we can grow. I know we'll have to make some assumptions to do that, but I think it really plays into these decisions that we're going to have to make. If we put a man camp in the northwest quadrant of the community, I don't see that being conducive to near-term residential development. Long-term, yes, but not near-term. However, I don't know if that's a pertinent question. I don't know if we're going to need to grow as far as a man camp would be located to accommodate 25,000 or 28,000 people. I think we just need to know that. I think both these projects will probably come through planning and zoning, and it'll be a while before we see them at city commission, but, you know, we've done a pretty good job so far. We're going to make some mistakes along the way. We will. But this northwest quadrant of town, we should really be holding sacred from a planning standpoint. It'd be nice if we had a comprehensive plan. That's going to really help us, but we won't have that luxury by the time we have to make those decisions. So I'd like to make that request of staff and that we try to take a look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Is that something that you gentlemen kind of regularly look at? I know in the past, and probably goes back better than a year ago, I think Mr. Soren gave us an update on kind of the lots that were available at that time, but of course, a lot has changed since then.
No, I think that's something we can work towards updating some of the information that we provided in the past. Obviously, there's lots that have come on, some that will be taken off, but we should be able to provide that.
Comments from other commissioners?
You ready for a new comment?
For me?
You ready for a new comment?
Yeah, no, no.
Okay. Last Wednesday, the sirens were set off in that storm a few times. I don't know who can answer this question, but there's some concern by citizens that in that event, it might have been crying wolf to the point where it's not for the safety of the community, but people are just going to ignore the sirens and so on. Can we review the events or the guidelines that were met that night to warrant the sirens being set off?
Commissioner Steiner, I've also received a few concerns about that same evening. I've referred most of them to emergency, Stark County Emergency Manager, Bill Falsing. He has since indicated that he would also like to review the overall policy of sounding the alarms during a severe thunderstorm event. I believe that policy was reviewed several years ago, and I believe he has some suggested changes. In fact, the National Weather Service is not pleased with our policy as it's currently stated. So maybe what I can do is ask Mr. Falsing to come and address the city commission regarding any proposed changes that he may have in regards to this issue.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Anybody else have comments? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.